Alright, everybody, welcome to the work session of the Town Board of Newcastle for Tuesday, January 17. Can I have a motion to open work session? All in favor? Alright, so on our agenda for those who see it, we are going to first talk about our proposed resolution in opposition of redistricting. So we've heard yet again that we may be taken out of Assembly, our current Assembly district. Chris Burdick is our Assembly member. We, I know that some of us are going to be testifying to keep remaining in the Assembly district, but I thought it would be really important for the Town Board as a whole to enter into a resolution where we're formally stating that as a town, we want to remain in that district. So there's a draft that thankfully Jill, thank you for putting together. We kind of culled this from things other towns have done, but you know, we have a significant nexus with other municipalities within our district. And you know specifically, our schools are within different districts. We held a lot of inter municipal agreements with Mount Kisco, Bedford. So that's really what this is saying, we're obviously not gonna vote on it today because you're just seeing it. But I did want everybody to review this, I think it's very important certainly if there are any other things that we missed. And one, Ed, did we put the airport in here? If there's anything we missed that you think should be added, we are happy to do that. So any thoughts?
There's certainly a lot of areas of mutual concern. One of them that I'm not seeing listed here is the fact that some residents of Mount Kisco share the St. Public Library as residents of Newcastle because they're in the Chappaqua Central School District. And it's the Central School District Library. So those residents living in Mount Kisco have their public library in the town of Newcastle.
So when we talk about, maybe when we talk about our school system here?
Yeah, after paragraph 10.
We can say and library.
Yeah, so actually, so Newcastle's unusual in that we have, we're covered by 13 different zip codes. And so that section of Mount Kisco is actually Newcastle Chappaqua Schools. It has, it's now delivered by Mount Kisco Post Office. And in some instances, it's covered by Northern Fire Protection, which is actually Mount Kisco.
I mean, that's.
So when you live in Kisco Park, for example, you are a non-resident eligible to use Leather Park because a portion of your taxes goes to Mount Kisco. But the library isn't actually part of this CCSD and it's Chappaqua. So you don't use Mount Kisco Library.
That's what I'm saying.
No, that's what I was saying.
That's what I'm saying, so are you saying that those residents whose post office is Mount Kisco
Are Newcastle residents.
and are in the CCSD are Newcastle residents, even though their PO is Mount Kisco?
Yes.
Okay, so the CCSD has no residents in the town of Mount Kisco. Okay. I always thought there were some because the PO box is Mount Kisco.
Yeah, it's a unique thing.
So even in like Lawrence Farms East, half of that is Mount Kisco.
Right.
PO, but it's still Newcastle.
Right, that's right, and even further north, all the way up to Kathleen Lane and those areas.
Exactly, yeah.
So that's Newcastle, not Mount Kisco. That area is weird up by Kathleen Lane. But it's Mount Kisco PO, their address is Mount Kisco.
Yes, and a lot of the, and some of those are Mount Kisco schools. So Bedford schools is some of that area as well. So Newcastle encompasses obviously CCSD, but Byram, Byram Hills, Bedford, Yorktown, Austining, Mount Pleasant on the same line. We collect for six different schools.
Yes.
How about, do we do any for North Castle too? Because some of our residents go to Byram Hills.
Yes.
Byram, Bedford, Yorktown, Austining.
Yorktown.
You think we're messed up?
So the library does not apply in this case.
Right. Very, yeah.
You think we've got it bad, just think of North Castle, we've really got it bad.
I'm looking over, I see, we put something in about the watershed, right?
Yes.
Yes.
East of Hudson.
Right, yes.
I'm just looking at what I said last year's meeting to the committee.
Did you speak about the IMA with Mount Kisco to provide that down?
The sewer infrastructure. I'm sorry for seeing this, we discussed the schools and 684, we're concerned we share the roadway as opposed to seeing Chris or the district go further west to the other side of Hudson.
684 is good, I actually don't have that on here. But is that in, that's not in Newcastle, there's 684s on here.
No, but it belongs all along parallels down Mount Kisco, where our local border up against it's only steps away. We have the Taconic as well, so the other major roadways that come through are adjacent to.
Did we put Metro North?
Yes, we did.
Metro North is in here.
The Sawmill.
Yeah. I.
So even though 684 physically is not a stop, it's going right next to us with Mount Kisco, pardon me, with the Taconic and the Sawmill.
The Sawmill to me is more applicable because that goes directly through Newcastle and Mount Kisco, not Bedford.
Right, so we talked about the Harlem Line of the Metro North Highway, and Stonehill Parkway.
You talk about hospitals, Northern Westchester Hospitals.
I could mention a hospital.
I see it now.
Unless it's part of, yeah, WMS.
I see it now, sorry, it's on paragraph nine, you did say Northern Westchester Hospitals.
Okay, it's part of the catch area, I could break that into two separate ones because the first part talks about WMS.
I would separate it because I think it's significant enough to stand on its own.
Yeah, so maybe we could break it out. But just the, the, um, just the sentence that says our communities are strategic and go okay within the Northern Westchester Hospitals hatchment area. Let's let that be separate because the rest of the stuff is talking about WMS.
Yeah, when you talk about WMS, I have here, if this statistic is right, last year I said 90%, 90% of the Assembly district Bedford, Lewisville, Mount Kisco, North Castle, North Salem are serviced by Westchester EMS. So it's 90% all in his district.
Right, yeah, and I have to say that's just, that's just huge, the fact that.
There is no percentage in here, but maybe we should.
I think that percentage is good to put.
Yeah, I said it that last year, must have had it from him from last year.
Yeah, we don't have that in here.
But I could share, this is my scratch statement from last year. It's funny, I didn't save the final one because it was ready to go, I think I'd be doing this again. So this is the scratch one.
There you go.
You know, and Chris has been, aside from the fact that we really have a nexus with all these other communities, Chris has been a phenomenal advocate for Newcastle and I think it would really be a loss if we, if we lost him as our representative.
Yeah, just a person that would want, yeah.
Alright, this is great.
It's good, right? Yeah, so I would love to put this on for next week. So in the meantime, if you have any other additional changes you want, just send those over.
Yes, send them over.
Send them over to Jill, but.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I had a few little myths, punctuation, I'll send those to you.
Thank you, I did a Herculean task just going through to try to format it, you should have seen the original. Formatting is not my strong suit, I'll be the first to tell you.
You got some time.
Oh, geez.
Okay. Alright, moving on to goals and objectives. So the only person I received goals and objectives from was Vicki.
Really?
Yes, so.
Considering I said it today.
But this guy came in before the meeting, but, so maybe we just want to talk about them since they haven't been sent. And then I also want, before we do that, I just want to remind everybody, if you could please send me your preferred committee assignments, even for those of you who were on committee liaisons last year, please resend me the ones you would prefer to be on and so I can try to coordinate placements. Alright, so we're gonna talk about goals and objectives, so, well, I'll let Jeremy do it.
Well, I think Vicki can start her open, she's.
Oh, okay, so I put down zoning legislation. Reviewing.
You said zoning for North Greeley.
Zoning for North Greeley, so I'm looking at my rough notes here, zoning for North Greeley. Visioning for town owned land. Sidewalks, including the trapline. And I think that all of the FEMA and water infrastructure are things that we must do. And I just wanted to know what is the bandwidth for all of that, you know, because I think the FEMA and the, all the water infrastructure work has to get done. That's a has, has to do, the others are to some extent things that we have to do too. Looking at zoning and town owned land, I think we have to do that. And then there's the Recreation Master Plan, which I wondered, would the bulk of that be done by the Rec and Parks Department?
Or at some point? Well, that's done, it just needs to be presented to us.
Right, so I'd like to see that done too, since, or completed, since that doesn't seem to require too much work on the town administration.
Right, so.
That's been completed already, they just haven't presented it to the board yet, but they will. Can I ask you a question, in terms of sidewalks, I know you said the trapline, are there any other particular sidewalks you're interested in?
We did talk about that, yeah, the one we looked at with the Streetscapes company, the one.
By the Millwood.
From West Orchard School, Millwood. I think that's an important one, to connect the hamlets.
Right.
There was, you know, the shared infrastructure work with the county.
Right, the exception of 120.
The county Trump line, that's on 120. There was a third one that we had talked about that seemed fairly feasible.
I think it was a continuation of the one on 120.
Right.
But that's the best issue.
And the trapline, I think those three are good too. Okay, yeah, and especially if you want to create walkability in the hamlet, connecting hamlets and reducing use of cars, I think that the trapline will become really important.
Absolutely.
Do you want to do anything else, Jill?
At my, so I've had the good fortune, or some might say misfortune, or a glen for punishment, to be on many a goals and objectives that we've done over the years. Some keep on popping up, but to be clear, anyone who's listening, there's the must haves, which are not necessarily part of this, but because they're must haves, we need to get it done. But I share Vicki's sentiment about zoning, I think no matter what side you fell on the zoning equation last year, or two years ago, there is a lot of room for improvements to make something happen and that kind of thing. And especially with some of the things we discussed with what may be coming down, or will come down from the state. Rather we do it than the state tell us what we need to do and how we need to do it. So I think that's of critical import sooner rather than later and whatever that creatively can be and whatever we can come to an agreement on, that I think is really central, zoning.
She's talking about zoning for the whole hamlet.
Well, specifically, we know what we're working on right now, but I think we have to identify at least within a half mile of the train station, which is the hamlet, in the event that the governor makes it a reality that this could be her decision and legislature's decision on how we zone for the future and what we can do. We should be proactive and as we wait to hear what that may be, we should just be ready to have the community understand that and have the community buy in and share their input on what they want to see. So if it can be feasible, let's try to move it forward. And part of that, and I think it's something important to everybody, is not just rezoning, but rezoning and having workforce and affordability component too, which the state again wants to see happen, as many residents do, but we'd rather be doing it on our own as opposed to imagine it through the state. And then in terms of, again, to follow on what Vicki said, in terms of walkability, we've been looking at the trapline for some time, so hopefully there's a way we can make it that much closer to reality. Whether that's through grants, whether that's through state generating dollars, through our legislators, whatever it may be. But, and if you're asking about specific sidewalks, connecting Gedney to the schools and to the, to Millwood, I think is really critical to make it more accessible and usable with, you know, the bike rail, the bike trail with the schools. We're losing so much and no one wants to walk on that road for the right reason. So making that a reality is something I think is critical. So in some zoning, whatever that means, but at a minimum, we'll work on that and walkability.
Lisa and Jeremy, since you guys have kind of been through this before and you had started your comments, are there things that you feel like, is walkability, you said like one of those things that keeps popping up, that is popping up or?
Yeah, but walkability, you have to understand, what's lost on a lot of people is we would either have to take people's land in some circumstances, it's expensive proposition, you have to have certain setbacks for sidewalks with snow, snowshelves. So it's not an easy thing to do, as much as we want to say let's do it, naturally we studied so much and a lot of times you say, well, keep on studying, keep on looking, but it's not an easy thing to do, it's expensive. And someone may not want to give their property, the little issue we had with Chappaqua Crossing on Anandale, you know, we made efforts to better site mine, but you have to buy in from the owners of the land to allow that to happen. So it's, I'm sure it's happened before we were on board, the same issues. But that's why I think the trapline, and at minimum, could be a really interesting and hopefully great asset.
Absolutely.
Okay, do you have any?
You know, I'm very curious to see the master plan myself and to get information from that, you guys know.
For the Rec Department, yeah.
From the, yeah. And to just kind of hear from the Rec Department about what some of their goals and objectives are before I kind of come up with my own because they think that there are some projects that maybe they've been wanting to get done for a while, like the GEDNES steps, which are, you know, I don't know if there's a bid out or what, I don't know where, you know, where they are, but hopefully soon. No, I know that's been like on their punch list for a long time and I want that to get done. I'd kind of like to hear from them first before I finalize my thoughts. But I don't disagree about zoning. I think what's important is that we're able to make decisions and do things on our terms while we can because it does seem like we may lose that ability. And I do love the idea of connecting the hamlet and especially connecting GEDN park to the rest of the town because I can walk to GEDN park from my house and it's the best thing that happened for my family, honestly. It was amazing discovering that we could do that. And it's, it's just, you know. But the most important thing I want to say, and Vicki said it too, I'm more focused on infrastructure projects, things that we have to get done, things that we can't put off, that for me is the priority. Now dealing with, you know, an issue downtown, that just disrupts the whole quality of life for all of the residents and is, even though it's not fancy and it's not always pretty, it's that work that needs to get done. So I would say those are where my priorities are for sure. Infrastructure projects that we maybe haven't been putting off, we're at the top of the list. And then what Parks and Recreation comes back with.
Molly? So I sort of took for granted that the infrastructure and the kind of basics were above.
Those are must haves, yes, I agree.
Yeah, so I didn't even put those into like my thinking. I agree about looking at zoning and even more broadly housing in general. I'd like to, you know, think about how we're meeting some of the gaps in addressing the housing crisis. And walkability, connecting the hamlets, absolutely, that's all really important to me. Also, as that ties into the environment and reducing how many buses are on the roads, how many cars are on the roads, having people move in another manner than their cars and their, and the buses, especially the diesel buses. So another one of my priorities is also just kind of the environmental aspect and how we're as a community looking to reduce our carbon output.
Those are mine. Yeah, I want to piggyback on that and to say, oh, sorry, it's your turn, but I just wanted to say that the walkability of the trapline is part of that environmental piece, so it's great. Just want to add that, yeah, I think those are true things.
So with mine, I agree with a lot of these, mine has been the trapline since we, you know, conceived it. So I absolutely want to get that done. I think it's very doable, we just need to get money to do that. But I think it's a phenomenal way to connect the hamlet here with Chappaqua Crossing. It allows so many kids to walk to school, it would allow people to go shopping up there, maybe to Whole Foods walk back here for the, you know, it allows the Greeley Track Team a place to run. There are so many pros for that, so I 100% want to get that done. Along with the other sidewalks, I want to connect, certainly, we've been discussing one in Millwood, connecting Gedney and West Orchard to the Millwood Hamlet. I think, you know, we've done studies on that, we've seen the presentation, I think that is also eminently doable, so I would like to do that, as well as study the ones up 120 so we can at least be connecting all of our elementary schools into a hamlet, I think that's really important. Again, our Rec Department Master Plan, I do want to see that. A few things that I'm thinking are coming out of that that I would love to see is being able to turf the upper Gedney field. And I also really, no one mentioned this, but I really want to put in a badminton court and I've been kind of saying that for years, I think there's a very large group in town who utilizes that all the time and unfortunately, they're confined to playing in Bell School and it's not always accessible to them. And I know it's something that would be very important for a large contingent of our town, so I would like to get a badminton court in. In terms of the environment, I also want to look into getting another electric bus and really figuring out if we can have a route, I know we have the shuttle around town that goes from Chappaqua Crossing to the train station, but I would also like to expand that route to connect Millwood so that people who do want to go to the train or want to come into one of the hamlets and don't want to drive can actually use this electric shuttle that could go throughout, connect our three business centers, so the two hamlets of Millwood and Chappaqua and then the Chappaqua Crossing Business Center. So that to me is very important. As well as our visioning for town owned land. And hopefully that in the community center, if that's what.
You know what I forgot to discuss, last year, God, last year, time flies, two years ago, we had that organization come in about putting up big murals.
Yes.
On the hamlet. And I do disagree a little bit with your position was at the time, it may still be about spreading things in Millwood as well. I think we have to sort of pick and choose and right now, walkability is easier in the hamlet of Chappaqua as opposed to the hamlet of Millwood, and also probably have more structures to do it on with the overpass, with, you know, some town hall land and things like that. But I think that if we can find dollars, that may be an easier lift, get some good murals, which also does what we want, put feet on the ground, people can sit off here and look around, walk around. So we should try to get that going again, I don't know where, I don't know where we left it, but.
We left it there waiting for us whenever we can reset.
Yeah, so it was like 25,000 euro or something, or it was.
Yeah, I want to make sure though, one of the things, I know they came through and gave us that great presentation of, look at all the different walls in Town Board, but to me, I only want to put it on something that is owned by the town because we can't stop someone from selling a building and the next owner saying, nah, I'm gonna paint over that mural, I don't like it. So one thing that we talked about perhaps would be at Lower King, the bottom here, is maybe even erecting some kind of wall to block the view of the train tracks and then you'd actually seeing that coming down the hill.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, the whole length there, the underpass, the town hall. It's been a town hall, but anyway, finding the dollars, it seems more reasonable and realistic.
I think the idea of public art is good, but I, how much input do we have from the community?
Well, that's, my understanding was they would come to the community for a theme and then they would bring in these artists.
Got it, yeah. Did you ever talk about having a movable art mural, where you know, putting it on, on a surface that could be moved?
Interesting. That's what I was gonna say.
That wouldn't be static, like a natural wall.
You build a frame, then you add the frame.
Something that because then it can also be stolen.
So a big frame, they've all did, you can do it.
We can figure that, we should ask and discuss it, that's what I was gonna do. Whatever the concept is, I just thought it was a great idea.
Then the other thing I also wanted to do was figure out our next steps with Chappaqua. And if we're going to, how are we moving that forward, are we finding a company that we're gonna potentially lease it to, to run the theater? You know, to see what our next steps are there, in addition to whatever infrastructure we need to, but those are need to dos. At Chappaqua with the roof, et cetera. Yeah. Okay, so it sounds like a lot of these were in agreement, Jill, can you, I see you're taking notes, will you put that together, I mean, I did too, and then we'll come up with sort of what we think the overarching goals and objectives are, but I think we're basically on the same page, which is great. Okay, and we'll circulate that for next meeting. Alright, and then don't forget to send your committee thoughts. Okay, so we're gonna talk next about our community wide survey regarding use of town lands surrounding the Chappaqua train station. So we did get a number of RFP responses and three, and one of those companies, we don't think has the expertise really to to do this task in a way that will be meaningful to the town. But the other two are quite interesting, we've asked our town planner to go back to them, we had a few questions. She's gonna go back to each of those two entities and then we are gonna bring them in to interview on two separate days in February, hopefully. So we will move that forward, I'm hoping that after those interviews, we can quickly choose the company we like and start the process again. The process is not going to be there immediately, gonna go out, we're gonna be working with them to develop questions, to figure out the best ways to reach all of our residents.
Yeah, I just want to say that after what we went through with the community the past few years, I think that the, building the most inclusive process for the community is going to be the most important thing that we can do.
Absolutely.
And whatever it takes to reach the largest amount of people, giving them multiple options, whether it's in person, mornings, in person, evenings, you know, surveys, phone calls, multiple, you know, online opportunities, which, you know, we can get from these companies. I think that that has to be a real focus of what we do.
Absolutely. Alright, so moving right along to our Transportation Engineering and Parking Review Services RFP. Again, for those who recall, this is an RFP we issued for a consultant to help us to analyze the parking information that's gonna be coming in from the applicant on 50 North Greeley. So we received a few of those, Sabrina on?
No, she's at her, Planning Board, do you want?
Oh, no, no, that's okay, you don't have to pull her away from Planning Board. So she did have some recommendations based on those RFPs that came in, do we want to discuss them?
I think the board had a number of questions that indicated they would want Sabrina to go back and get the answers to before the board made a decision.
Yeah, I think you've given Sabrina direction in terms of where to go.
So she'll be getting back to that as well. We're gonna see what we can do about fitting these things on the 24th as best we can, otherwise we'll be back on February 7th. Because we don't have a meeting on the 31st, what's the thing?
Of February, you're talking about?
January.
January.
The 31st is the fifth Tuesday of the month, we don't meet. There's more than four Tuesdays in a month.
I told you I'm not gonna be here on the. I didn't say that, no, I told you, I I'm not gonna be here on their conference on the twenty-fourth, but I I
Whoopsie.
I don't know if I can zoom in, um, but if I can, I will.
From the casino?
No, no, I won't be up to you. For the record, Leslie, I will not give this to you. Oh, my God.
Um, do you wanna let us know?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, next, we're gonna talk about the sunset of the parking ticket rolling waiver policy, so this was really a holdover from COVID where if people were getting tickets uh in the parking lot, um, because they hadn't yet, I think uh renewed their parking permit,
I might renew it.
we were waiving them, and it's now time to end that policy, we believe.
Right, so um we were we were actually, we weren't completely waiting it, uh if you got a ticket, you came into the town clerk's office and you obtained your permit, within seven days of the ticket, you would then ask the court to waive it, which uh we admitted that during the pandemic, it things were a little disjointed, and we weren't as affected as getting the message out about the when the park that parking permit seasons were continuing, and that permit was still required, so.
Because we ended up extending the deadline of when parking permits expired, because people weren't utilizing it, because during pandemic, nobody was when at the height of the pandemic, people weren't going using the parking lot at all, so then we thought it was potentially unclear to people when we when they had to renew their permits, so that's why we were we were kind of waiving tickets, if then we said, oh, well, no, you did need to do that. Um, but now, I think it's pretty clear, people are starting to go back to work, um, and we've gotten a lot of parking, over a thousand, I think, right, every new parking have gotten parking permits recently, so um are there any thoughts about waiving this, meaning that now, if you park and you do not have a permit, you will get a ticket and it will not be waived?
That's very important, we were hoping to sunset it probably February one, we thought was a good you know, date, so the last day of the wave would be the thirty-first. But as Lisa said, we've, you know, gotten a a thousand applications for parking permits, so we we're pretty confident we've gotten the word out.
Have the number of um parking tickets being issued dropped off?
Um, they uh they actually um spiked maybe two weeks ago, our L our license plate reader finally came back online, so all the people that were flying under the radar got caught, um, and so I think we 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 now have had the bulk of the people.
Okay.
To to be clear, Jill, you actually told me this, because I didn't know, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, if you use a non-resident daily, and there you pay for this, you you, there's not any spaces available, you can park in the main lot, but pay by plate?
Okay, so I'm almost almost correct, so if if you have a pay-by-day permit, a resident from residents only.
So we explain that? On residents, okay.
Okay, so which is a a forty-dollar fee for a little hard card that has your license plate on it, and you go to your the permit spots, the numbered spots, and it turns out that there aren't those spots there, you can take and park in the large lot and just pay by day, so you pay by fleet, so we have the option to do that, but you do actually need a permit.
So if you're a non-resident or use a non-resident spot, no spot, too bad.
Yeah, sorry.
Gotcha.
It's for residents. Okay, and uh what we're noticing is is that people are buying um permits differently, uh Christina can probably speak to this, Christina can?
She actually can't, her mic is not working.
Ah, so I'll say for now, Christina, just thumbs up or thumbs down, depending upon how I do. But so um we're actually been getting more uh pay-by-day permits rather than annuals, uh and I I can only assume that people just aren't sure what their schedule's gonna be, so they took it, you know, they they'll pay for twice a week, three times a week. If they do the math, they'll find out that buying the annual permit is actually considerably cheaper, but it doesn't require the full, I mean. However, they wanna do it, but the lot is definitely closer to, let's, I would say a third of the back lot we're up to.
Yeah, depends on the day, but yeah.
Okay.
When I passed by today, it, I think it was the most full I've seen it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was pretty full, I did circle back around, cuz I was curious, and the front lot was not full.
Early in the week, it is.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I think that people have their spot where they'd like to park, and so, cuz I thought, oh, it's got pretty crowded, but then I went back in, not the not the circle, but the front lot, you know, right? It was not full, I loved it.
Interesting, yeah, only because I've walked through it the past couple of uh days last weekend, it's very full.
Yeah.
Arm of the day's the skate park.
Yeah, um, and and along Washington Avenue.
Yeah, can I just add?
Yes.
One thing as a as a consumer here.
Yeah.
Uh, seeing the lot as much as last week, uh, the, there is an enormous amount of confusion as to what and where, and folks that wanted to be compliant could not be compliant.
What and where what?
The parking, train station parking.
We haven't changed it, nothing's changed.
I understand, but a lot of, there are a lot of new people in town that don't even know, cuz they they moved in since, what I'm trying to say is uh did not help that when the when the machine that you uh you fed the credit cards or the the coins into wasn't issuing receipts, it was uh it was not functioning with with receipts, and the last receipts that I saw were in December, so.
Yes, we 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 are aware of the problem.
I know you're fixing, I know you're fixing, I got it, I I'm just putting it out.
All right, well, actually, to John's point, um, there are a lot of new residents who did move here at the height of the pandemic and maybe never actually parked at the train station, and are now suddenly commuting, so I think in the supervisor's report, do we have a a PDF I can mark up of our parking?
We we have uh PDFs of our maps.
Right, that's so we can just say permit parking here, okay, I'd like to put that in the supervisor's report.
Yes, there actually we have a link to the website, yeah, we do. It's fine, if you actually go to the clerk's page um under parking, there is, it's a color color-coded map
Okay.
Right.
Where you can park.
And print it out and actually post it down and around the train station, so when people come, because us, a lot of the parking issues related to kids and and uh folks that have gone to a new new phase of from middle school to high school and things like that, anything that we can do to communicate what the right thing is to do, I think, would be a benefit to the town, excuse me for interrupting.
No, that's a, that's actually a good point, um, but Jill, I do wanna revisit just given that we talked about this at the planning board meeting, and then I heard from members of the planning board, actually, all of them who really like the idea to potentially make the current daily spots just municipal parking and move those daily spots as we just as we talked about at the meeting. Sorry.
Okay, yes, yeah, well, we we'll certainly look into that.
Okay.
We just replaced all of the signs at great expense.
Signs? Well, but we can move the signs, they're not done, but yes, I don't think, I unfortunately, I don't think that should stop.
I didn't say it should stop.
I know, I know.
John just, John just talked about the fact that people don't know what to do when the various changes, so.
Oh, I know. Um, all right, uh, anything else? So any, do you wanna go through the administrative items, Jill?
Uh, sure. You should write my glasses down, okay, uh, so our administrative items are our payment of claims, the adoption of minutes, which is from December twenty twenty-two, uh, also, um, the adoption of the monthly reports from twenty twenty-two. We've got um our NIC system report, which is for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, it's one of our operating systems. It is a significant expense, which is why it's in there, just let it go with now. Uh, next is, um, okay, uh, next is uh water maintenance material, uh, maintenance materials uh for gate valves. We're going out to bid for twenty twenty-three uh campus transportation services, uh, this is all part of our camp, um, bathroom trailer rentals that we use at Amsterdam Park, and authorization uh for um for staff downstairs to uh attend the New York State Recreation and Parks Annual Conference.
What, how difficult would it be to actually build bathrooms at Amsterdam?
We don't, we 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 do not, because it's in a wetland, so we don't have the ability to put in the septic system back there. It's very difficult.
You do have the option, if you wanted to, to do what they do at Rockefeller, and there they have no plumbing attached.
Right, it's aerobic bathrooms, the problem is is that we have women children, and I, it literally, you know.
I understand, it it's always awkward, I got it, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, and there's there's no area there that's not in that one that we could consider doing that?
No, I'm happy to ask again about it, but it's 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 been asked over the years multiple times, and if anything, the Department of Health is more stringent now than it was years ago about setting up septic in in um in wetland areas. Um, but I'm happy to ask again.
Okay. All right, any questions on any of the administrative items? Okay, so while, hmm? Yeah, why don't we adopt the resolution while we're we're still waiting for?
All right, I am moved to approve the payment of claims in the amount of two hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars, fifty-three cents, two thousand and twenty-two expenditures totaling two hundred twelve thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents, and this year's expenditures totaling forty-three thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, twenty-nine cents, listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail reports, all dated January fourteenth of twenty twenty-three, checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed tomorrow, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Shall I make a telephone call and see if you can jump on as soon?
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, we are gonna take a short break while we uh wait for our state assemblyman to join us. So Lauren, is there a way to 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 pause us?
We can all sit at this.
Yeah, I'll pause it up. All right, pausing.
No problem.
You're on.
Uh, hi, so we have with us on the phone right now, our illustrious state assemblyman, Chris Burdick, hi, Chris.
Hello.
How are you, Lee Son? Yeah, can you hear me?
How are you, can we make him a little louder?
One second.
Hang on, we're trying to make you a little louder.
Okay, sure, you know, uh
That's better.
Too many people complain about me being too quiet.
That's the first time for everything.
Exactly, that's right, you know.
I guess the floor is his, the floor is his.
So the floor is yours, we're happy uh that you were able to take the time to join us today.
Yeah, and I'm sorry that I was running late, I I was hoping to be at a session earlier so that I could be down and join you in person, rather than uh by phone at a rest stop on on I eighty-four.
Oh, that's not fun.
But better than that, stop that you would enjoy you at all, and listen, it's really, I really appreciate your inviting me, and I know that Jill had received um late afternoon, and Jill, thank you so much for your patience with with me on all of that, and uh my report, an update on what's going on here.
Yes, and we all have that.
And you know, rather than go through all of that, you know, I thought that I, you know, I think it might be best if we could talk about some of the concerns that we all share on this, you know, particularly, you know, the two areas where I've been hearing a good deal of concern. One is in the area of the governor's proposed housing compact, as she calls it, and the other is the is her veto of the bill that was sponsored by Sandy Galiff who gives tax assessors more flexibility in a way that new condominium units are being assessed. And I can tell you that I remember from the days of being supervisor in talking, you know, frequently with a tax assessor is, you know, at one point, the town was considering doing a a complete revale, which we decided against, the expense was pretty high, and you know, they had too many unusual parcels that would have required separate appraisals and things like that, but the long and short of it is, he said, oh, yeah, you know, if we were to do um a revale, then you can be sure that condominium units would be assessed higher, I said, really? And he said, yeah, I mean, the way that it all works is that they really get a break, which means that the other property owners in the town are subsidizing them. Well, that's not fair, that's not fair, and you know, I got hold of the veto message, and the veto message basically says, well, you know, I'm vetoing this because it would raise the cost for condominium owners, well, yeah, but that's because they've been getting a break, you know, and 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 what we want is fair and equitable, right? We wanna try to be fair and even-handed, and it wasn't being fair and even-handed. And so, you know, uh it I get what she was saying, with what what's, and she didn't write it, or the staff wrote it, right? And but, you know, it misses the point, the point is that it wasn't fair and equitable, that that that's what the bill was all about. You know, and Sandy Galiff was head of the Real Property Taxation Committee in the Assembly for a long time, and and she knew this stuff pretty well, and you know, she was always a straight shooter and somebody who wanted to do the right thing. So by no means was she trying to put the screws on condo owners, she just wanted to level the playing field, and she even did it as an option for assessors, it wasn't a thou shalt, you know, so I, you know, what we're gonna do is Greenberg got a bill through, um, Tom Abanati sponsored it in the Assembly, and the governor signed it, interestingly enough, there are some differences between that bill and the bill that she vetoed that Sandy Galiff had sponsored, and I'm having my um legal counsel, legislative director review it and and work on it, because that's what I have in mind for Newcastle, it would be a home rule bill, and um we would have Pete Harkam carrying it on the Senate side, and interestingly, um, in North Castle, they're all, they're also very disappointed about it, and so I've spoken to um Jelly Mayor and see if we can have her carry it over there, but in any event, I'm, you know, I'm quite confident that that Pete will carry it, um, but that's that's the plan on that front, and so you know, I just wanted you to know that I'm working on that, I I don't have guarantees of success, you know, because who knows what deal might have been struck, you know, uh, i- in order to get that through, I I'm being very candid with you, and so I just wanted to let you know, you know, what what I'm trying to get done on that front.
Hey, appreciate it.
And you know, I'm happy and happy to 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 field any questions that you guys have along the way, and I'll certainly keep you posted on how this develops, and you know, what we come up with, and obviously, you're gonna wanna review it and see what you think, um, but the idea is kind of an option in, okay, and so that that that's how would, but but in your case, it would be just for Newcastle that you could do this, um.
And again, it would be it would be for new construction, you think, or?
Yes, yeah, I think it would be for new construction, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so and so it's not as though you're slamming existing condo owners, you know?
Right.
At least on on a going-forward basis, you're trying to level the playing field, I mean, and and that that that's my understanding. I have to take a look at the Greenberg bill that passed, because I'm not not that familiar with that one, and and to see how it works. I, you know, I I spoke very briefly with my um legislative director, and he said, they are different, and the Greenberg bills are bill is kind of complex, so I I gotta unpack it and figure out what's going on with it, and so, but I will keep you guys surprised. The other thing that, you know, um The other thing that, you know, um, is gonna take a pretty deep dive is to figure out exactly what the governor has in mind in terms of, um, what she calls the housing compact. Now, look, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start by saying that i- i- look, there is just a dire shortage of ha- uh, of affordable housing in Westchester County, in every one of our towns. Interestingly, what the benchmarks are that come out of this is there targets, and, and I spoke to Harvey Epstein, actually, this afternoon because he got a briefing from the governor's people, I think yesterday. And Harvey, as you may know, is the sponsor of the ADU bill.
Mm-hmm.
And, which he's gonna be totally revamping, by the way. But let me get to that in a minute. Um, and so I said, so Harvey, you know, tell me a little bit more about this. I read, you know, the, the budget, uh, not the budget book. There's a, um, an online, uh, book that comes uh, with the governor's speech, okay, that, uh, her State of the State address that gives you a bit more detail on what she has in mind. And so, the way that it works is as follows. The state is, uh, uh, first of all, i- it's all based on targets. And the targets are three percent for any community, and it's basically the city of New York and, and downstate communities served by the MTA, okay? And the target, and by the way, the base year is next year, not this year, okay? And within a three-year period of time, the target is for each municipality to increase its overall housing stock, overall housing stock, by three percent.
Every three years.
E- e- every three years, right. Now, all housing, okay? Now, in there, and I still have to figure this out because it's not really fleshed out, is it says that the targets will give, um, special weight to those communities that increase within that, uh, you know, um, affordable housing. So I don't know quite how that works. I mean, I, i- is it three percent, or is it something less than three percent? Because you've done well in getting affordable housing. It, it, we really don't know on any of this stuff until we see the budget. Because the budget contains legislation. And that's permitted under a provision in the New York State Constitution called Article Seven in which the governor has the authority to include in her budget legislation. Now, that doesn't mean that you vote for the budget and you're stuck with the legislation. That doesn't mean that's the case. Because what will happen is in the negotiation between the executive and legislature, they say, uh-uh, wait a second, no, no, we're not, we, we don't accept that Article Seven. Or they say, look, um, we agree with it in principle, but we gotta work on it. Or, you know, in, it's in the, what they call the three-way agreement, which is the agreement between the governor, the state senate, and the Assembly, they say, you know what, we're just gonna take it out entirely, but we commit to doing something in this area. Well, you'll recall that the last go-around, she really got tremendous slack on the ADU and TOD proposal, okay? Tremendous slack. And so this is not that proposal, okay? Because the TOD is not required right off the bat, okay? It isn't. You do the three percent within that three-year period, and you're good. Now, if you don't, then that's when you have ways in which you're gonna remediate it, okay? And that's when you gotta take a number of different actions, which would include ADU legislation. It could include TOD legislation. It could include other local laws to make less stringent provisions within the zoning code dealing with housing, okay? So, that, that's, and, and again, I'm sure you've got a gazillion questions because I do too, okay? And because none of this is really that clear, okay? And, but I just want to share with you what I now know. And, you know, one of the interesting things that Harvey is gonna do is he decided that he's gonna offer ADU legislation. But it's not gonna be, uh, a thou shalt, okay? It's gonna be either an opt-in or an opt-out, okay? And Dana Levinberg, uh, yeah, I, well, one, I, I just say, one of my other colleagues and I were talking to him, and we both said to him, Harvey, if you make that an opt-in, I'll co-sponsor it. And because we don't, I don't want municipalities to have to go through the agony of opting out, okay? It's not fun. Uh, you know, you, you, because you'd have to hold a public hearing on that too. And, you know, i- it just, i- it gets into too much. I, I just really would prefer an opt-in. And then the idea is that perhaps it's one of the things that could help with goals and things like that. But let me just tell you this, is that everything that I can tell about this right now is that this has a whole lot more legs, okay? That, that, that could be the potential bad news. The good news, though, is I really think that they're willing to talk. I really think that they want to make it work. Coincidentally, and it took me a, a month and a half to get this meeting, I had a Zoom meeting with the commissioner of the Division of Housing and Community Renewal, Ruth Ann Vishnowskis. And, and she's, she's good. She's been doing a good job. And I said, you know, I, I really have to share with you some of the, some of the problems that a lot of my communities confront. And you will have state statutes in place right now that are gonna be on a collision course with what you want here. And she didn't know what it's sung about, and understandably, okay? I said, look, a lot of the communities that I represent are in New York City watershed. And there are state statutes and regulations that protect the watershed. Example, you have a wastewater treatment plant, and say that it's rated for 300,000 gallons per day of, of wastewater flow. Maybe it's a new housing project. And that new housing project could require the expansion of that wastewater treatment plant at who knows how much cost. And in addition, the New York City DPD could say, wait a second, we have something to say about that. You don't like it. And, and in essence, they could veto it at least in current law. And I said, you know, these things have to be reconciled because, you know, you're running into these infrastructure issues. Now, to their credit, they do understand that they're infrastructure issues. I'm not sure that they really understand the depth of these infrastructure issues. I really don't. And, but in the budget, the proposed budget, doesn't come out until February one, they'd be putting in $250 million for infrastructure connected, you know, uh, costs, project costs, planning and project costs. Now, I know that things work too, is that it's gonna be on a grant basis and competitive and all of that. But at least there's something there to help.
That's all relative.
So we'll get, we'll get nothing. I mean, $250 million is like a drop in the bucket for what municipalities might need to do.
Oh, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. I mean, and look, that's the reason why we so urgently needed the bond issue. Because there's, you know, one of the good things is that there's a lot of money that's gonna be flowing towards water quality projects. A lot of money. There's still money from the Infrastructure Bill Act last year, the federal. That, that money hasn't started to, to get into the pipeline yet. It takes a long, long time for federal money like that to get into the pipeline. In addition, you've got money that the, the state has been putting in to infrastructure at the rate of like 500 million a, a year, okay? Lot of money. And i- uh, a lot of that money because of the pandemic hasn't been spent. And so, and then you've got the bond issue on top of that. And so there's gonna be a lot of money out there for these projects. So i- i- I don't think it's gonna be a complete, uh, impossibility. I really don't. For, you know, the, the, the municipalities in Arizona zip codes to, to get money. You know, particularly those that say, we really want to do something. Now, you know, I, I I, I can just tell you that I'm gonna be staying in, in, in close connection with you folks about all of this stuff. Because I can tell you that I, I fought pretty hard last year during the budget season to help knock out the TOD and the ADU proposals. And, you know, I'll be candid with you, you know, Pete and I are longtime friends, you know, we go back almost 20 years. And I said, Pete, you know, this is really a problem for me. And he's a wonderful guy, and he understood. And, you know, I think he really gets it that this had to be different. And he also is much more, uh, you know, he's much more likely to understand the nuances here. And so I, I do think, you know, there are bright people that are in her a- a- administration. Vish- Vishnowskis is, is a decent person. She's, she, she's really good. And, you know, when I, I started getting into all of this with her, I said, uh, you know, and, and, and her answer, by the way, when I told her about the New York City watershed stuff, is she said, look, we really are not interested in creating goals that cannot be met. We really want to do something that will work. And I believe her, I, I do. I mean, it's, you know, I'll give as an example, if you take the MS four regulations, right, and the five-year plans. And, you know, look, um, I, I was supervisor at the time when we were not meeting, you know, the five years. Did DEC take a baseball bat and hit us over the head? No. They said, okay, you know, we, we really are persuaded that you have been exerting good faith efforts. I think as much as anything, municipalities are gonna be judged as to whether or not they are applying good faith efforts and doing things to try to help. And so I, I think that's gonna count for a whole lot. So, but, you know, as I said in, in my memo there, you know, i- i- we have to see what the budget is, you know, what the actual proposal is, what the language is. We, we have to, uh, dissect it. And, uh, you know, the devil's in the details on this stuff. But I can assure you that I am gonna be, um, I am gonna be fighting very hard for Newcastle and the other municipalities that would have real trouble with it.
So, uh, we appreciate that, um, very much. And before we sort of get into this topic, I just wanted to let you know that, that before you join, the town board discussed tonight the adoption of a resolution in opposition to the redistricting plan and strongly, uh, advocating to remain in the 93rd Assembly District with you. So, um, my thought is we're actually gonna adopt that at our meeting next week and send that up, as well as you know that, that members of the town board will be testifying on the 30th as well. So I'm just...
Very much appreciated. And, um, you know, look, I, I really, really like representing Newcastle. Um, but the, you know, the, the reasons for keeping it in the 93rd are really sincere in terms of what the communities of interest are. You know, Newcastle is not an urban community. It's not peak skill. It's not assening, you know? It, it, it's, it's, it's just got a totally different character. And, and so I, I, and you know, what was, to me, really so interesting is that Newcastle has been part of a district, uh, the 93rd and its predecessors with northeast Westchester County since 1906.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, there's gotta be a reason for this, you know? I mean, because it just makes sense. And, you know, i- i- and, and so I, I'm cautiously optimistic that, you know, with, with the adoption of that and going to the hearing, that i- it's gonna be compelling for the independent redistricting commission. You know, and bear in mind, the only thing that they issued thus far is a draft. It's not the proposal. It's a draft. And so they will then, after the hearings, that's when they're going to be putting out an actual draft proposal that then would be submitted to the legislature.
Okay.
So I, I thank you for everything you're doing on this. I do think it has an impact. Um, i- i- it has a real impact. In fact, I briefly spoke to the Speaker of the Assembly, and he said, you know, you're doing with, with your communities exactly what you need to do. Every member of the Assembly should be doing the same thing. And, um, Warren Lucas is gonna be adopting a resolution, um, as well, prior to the hearing. You know, uh, very similarly to what, um, you know, uh, and, and by the way, Jill did a fabulous job on this, you know?
Yes, it's great.
And, and she did a fabulous job.
She did.
I mean, the detail and, and the specifics were really, really very impressive, so, um, I thank you.
Yes, yes, she did. Um, all right, so now turning to the TOD. So, this is my concern, and let's take as a given that it is a laudable goal to increase housing stock and to increase affordable housing stock particularly. But I would much, and, and I'm in favor of that, and I think everyone in this town board, and frankly, any, every supervisor and mayor I've spoken to takes that as a given, that it's, it's a laudable goal and something we all want to strive, strive to do. That being said, I fully believe that a top-down approach to accomplish this is not the way to proceed. Instead, I really think it needs to be scrapped and start with a bottoms-up approach where we get together as municipalities and with the state and figure out the best ways to make this work. Because frankly, each municipality has different issues and concerns. We have, um, different infrastructure needs, parking needs. We have tax caps. How are we gonna pay for this? Even if, even if we did get grant funds, which don't seem like there would be a lot available to us, um, how are we making up the difference? I'm gonna have to increase taxes. So even if we got relief from a tax cap, I still have to increase taxes, which is then gonna cause my residents to no longer be able to afford to live here. And it's not discussing, you know, the legislation's not taking into account open space. It's not taking into account a lot of environmental factors such as wetlands. It's even saying they would waive secret requirements. Um, so all of this that I'm seeing is making this completely untenable. You know, we just, for instance, in town, went through a, a proposed form-based code process where there were gonna be significant high-rises proposed in, in our town, and we didn't really have the infrastructure or frankly, the ability or the desire to, to go to that type of density. It's gonna impact schools. Am I gonna have to build new schools? Because if we have that kind of density in our downtown hamlet, all those children are going to one school, which means I'm either gonna have to bus them to different schools, bus them out of district, or build another school to avoid needing, you know... bus them out of district, or build another school to avoid needing, you know, trailers and having significantly overcrowded classrooms. Then we're going to need to hire more teachers. Now, granted, that's my school board, not the town board, but we are one community. So, there are so many issues, I would much rather say, "Okay, if this is our goal, how are we as communities going to accomplish this? And let's figure out how we can do it from a bottoms-up approach instead of a mandate from a top-down." And then for communities like ours, who have been very diligent in creating additional housing and affordable housing in the last few years, are we getting credit for what we've done in the past? I mean, my view, my read, my read, and again, I haven't seen the legislation, but my read is that as of the day it's adopted, it's 3% of the then housing stock. So, we won't actually get credit for the 60-plus units of affordable and attainable housing that we've put in in the last number of years. So, and I'm, you know, I'm not alone in this. I've actually spoken today to people with the Association of Towns. I was at the Westchester-Putnam Association of Town Supervisors. I was at the Wamoa meeting last week. This is all everybody's talking about. And every municipality, I have not met one where they say, "This is great." Everyone says, "But what about my particular issues in my town?" And a top-down approach is just not going to work. And so, I would strongly urge with these goals in mind, advocating that we have groups that sit down and figure out how we can make something work as opposed to making it a mandate that really is going to have, I think, unintended adverse consequences on municipalities.
You know, I agree with you on all of this. The one thing that I know they will say is that unlike the proposal last year, they are providing flexibility to the municipalities to come up with their own ways of meeting the targets. Meaning that unlike telling you what your zoning code must be, what they're saying is, "Here's your target, and you figure out how you want to meet it." And this is also where it comes back to, what does a good faith effort mean? And what does that, does that mean you get a waiver? What does that mean? And that's part of what I'm quite interested in learning about. In other words, going back to what Vishnawskis was saying to me last week, to say, "Look, you know, we don't want to create goals that can't be met, and we want to work with the municipalities." Well, my feeling about all of this is that stick to your guns, work within, you know, the, within Wamoa, and raise a stink. I'm telling you, because last year, when I was working with the municipalities to try to battle against the TOD and the ADU, we would not have been able to get that out of the budget proposal if it had not been for municipalities saying, "What the hell are you doing to us?"
Right.
And it was Long Island and Westchester especially that was raising a stink. And let me tell you something, it was very interesting. Last week, I was, and I could speak about this because it was an open meeting, the Down for Profit Westchester, which is a Westchester County group, obviously, coalition of nonprofits. And, you know, quite a few of them are affordable housing advocates. And, you know, to those who are in this business, you know, they may think this is the best thing since sliced bread. But, you know, so it came up, "Well, tell us what you think about this." And Gary Pretlow, who's a long-serving member who represents Mount Vernon, said, "Well, let me tell you something. I represent Mount Vernon, it's four square miles. We have three train stations."
Mm-hmm. It's their entire town.
Every, and by the way, and so, and it also addresses that this isn't a, you know, non-people of color community versus a people, you know what I'm saying? That, I think their entire city council, I know their mayor is African-American, and so they all unanimously hate this thing.
Yes, I know.
Because it's all, you know, Mount Vernon, you know, I was saying to a colleague, I said, "Do you know what this would mean? In order to increase the density within so many of the communities, you would have to demolish some existing buildings to build greater density."
Build taller ones.
It's all built out. What do you want? It's already built out, you know?
Right, right. You know, I just think...
But, but, but let me finish one thought, though, and that is that TOD thing, you know, that requirement, it's not so much a requirement, but one of the ways in which you can meet your targets, okay? If you have, in other words, that's what would occur, that, as I understand it, as Harvey explained it to me, I wasn't at this briefing that he had, is that if you don't meet your targets, then you need to come up with ways in which you can start meeting them. And the TOD is one of the ways. Doesn't mean that that's what you have to adopt. But again, I have not seen the language in the budget itself, the actual legislation. And so, I want to see what it actually says. You know, and similarly, at that meeting, Amy Pollan, you know, said, "You know, I represent communities in which, these are older communities, villages that have been built, you know, back in the last century and before." And, you know, what are they going to do? They can't just, you know, and that was, most of the focus, I can tell you, has been on the TOD, okay? That's been, where the greatest problem has been, because the ADU mandate is, the TOD, by the way, let me just make it clear, that as I understand the proposal, Harvey Epstein had confirmed this for me, TOD is not a mandate, okay? It's one of the ways in which to meet the requirements on the targets. ADUs is not a mandate, it's one of the ways to meet. You know, suppose that Harvey, you know, does this, and he hasn't even introduced the bill yet, okay? But say he has this bill to opt in, and say Newcastle opts in to the ADU thing, and I haven't read it yet, I don't even know what it says, and I don't have money to get, okay? But say you do, then presumably you get some points for doing that, okay? But going back to what I was going to, you know, saying before, please, raise your voices in Wamoa, in the meetings, tell, you know, tell Pete, tell others to tell their state legislators, and to tell the governor, and by the way, I understand that George is doing a meeting with the governor later this week, and municipalities, Governor herself, with Westchester municipalities, said, "I don't know whether you know about that, I heard about it indirectly." And, but if somebody can go to it from Newcastle and say, "This is really a problem for us," I think it really needs to be a chorus of people saying, "This is really a problem for us."
Well, I agree. You know, I'm less concerned, like you, with the ADU legislation. I've spoken, you know, we have ADU legislation in our book, and I did speak with Pete last week. I think, having not seen the legislation, I'm kind of optimistic that it's going to, it's going to be, come out, you know, in a place that is acceptable to us. I just think that it's, you know, paying lip service to them saying, "We want to work with municipalities." They really did, then maybe they should consult municipalities and actually have this, have this in the legislative process, instead of trying to pass it through in a budget. So, to me, it's a lot of lip service to say, "Yes, we want to do this," without ever actually meeting with municipalities, or, you know, try and trying to figure this out as opposed to really trying to just get it through, which, you know, by April, it's coming out in February, and the budget needs to be passed by April, that's not really giving much time, you know, for, to get input from municipalities and change any legislation.
Well, you know, as I understand it, the reason that she's coming to Westchester is to get some input. Now, where they take it from there, I don't know, but I think that, I do think that they're sincere about that. I do. And, you know, I, I think it is important that folks from the Newcastle Town Board, Lisa, if you can, that would be great, meeting with the governor. Now, I don't know whether it's a Zoom meeting or in-person, I'd have to check back. Have you heard about this?
I haven't heard about it, but I will be looking into it. Here's the question.
I'll find out, I learned about it from George, he sent out a, you know, a group text kind of thing to legislators, and they said, "Oh, really? You know, we didn't know this was going on." And so, you know, and that's all right, that's fine. And I'll try to get some particulars on it, too.
All right, great, I'm going to look into it as well, thank you. I think we had a couple other questions here.
Sure, yeah. Hi, Chris, it's Vicky Tip here. I have, I guess, it's not really a quick question, and I don't think you could answer it today, but Lisa just touched on it at the very end there. Obviously, you know, municipalities have their unique circumstances, and we're dealing with a myriad of really important issues here. Has there been any meaningful conversation about taking these policy questions outside of the budget process? Because that is not a thoughtful process for these really important issues to be hashed out. And if the governor wants meaningful conversation, she would take it out of the budget process. So, has there actually been any talk about that, just the process issue in and of itself, aside from the substantive issues we're dealing with?
Well, that's a really good question. And, you know, I think I touched on a little bit how these things play out in terms of the budget process. And that is that a lot of that will depend upon the temperament of, you know, the legislature to say how strongly they feel about trying to get it out of the budget. And, you know, with that very much in mind, to take it out of the budget process and instead have it go through committee, and have public hearing, and really have more of an input, I don't know the answer as to whether or not any portion of this housing compact will be taken out of the budget process, as it was last year. I don't know. It's a little early to say. But, you know, that's certainly an option for the legislature to try to hash out with the governor.
Right, because this is... Yeah, there is an artificial deadline.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, look, it helps a bit, it moves the deadline from April 1 to June 10, something like that, when we go out of session. But at least it gives more time. And, you know, I can say that thought has been given to this since last year, but these are complex issues, and a lot more thought does need to be given to it, and I don't think it's been done.
And frankly, it could be next legislative session, too, like, we can take the time to get it right.
It could. And, but I would urge you to speak to Pete about this, too.
Yep, we will. He's coming next week, I think.
Yeah, I mean, because that's something that, you know, is well worth racing with him. He has a fair deal of clout within the state senate, and I think that's important for him to hear.
Chris, I'm going to be quick, believe it or not. Number one, I'll make you blush and say, over the phone, saying, "We're really happy and grateful for all your work." Pete, your colleague, has been very receptive as well, and was when this issue was going on last year. But very quickly, I, you know, the top-down approach isn't the end of the world, I think it's the way it's been being done. Meaning, instead of the legislature, or alternatively, the governor sort of using a cudgel to make it happen, it should, if it's going to be top-down, I think there's a better argument to be making it more incentive-based. And that carrot is not $250 million, because that's really nothing in the whole scheme of things, but if municipalities were given a deadline, whatever that is, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, percentage, whatever that may be, and access to dollars, then I think a lot of municipalities would do it on their own to create it and make it happen, as opposed to some artificially imposed amount and deadline and percentage. And then, which begs the next question or issue that I have is, and I don't know if it's in the language, but what is the AMI? And it seems to be that there's a chasm between the haves and the haves-not, meaning it doesn't have to be the bottom level in AMI, there's an entire level in between that deserve that same access to housing, and, you know, we call it workforce housing, for example. But it seems to me that those folks are left out in the cold, and that's not reasonable either. So, you know, I think, generally speaking, yeah, top-down is not the best approach, I can see why there's a push for it, but it's going to be done. I think the carrot approach, saying, "If you have a project that's ready, you can access dollars," I think a lot of municipalities would take this on their own to make it happen. But that's all my comment, is really look at that option if you can, and I'd really like to know what AMI qualifies and what's being done for that entire spectrum of people in the middle that may not fall at the bottom end of the spectrum.
Yeah, no, I will look at that, Jeremy. And I have to say that, again, this is something that's not defined, it's not set out as to, and bear in mind that that 3% is 3% for all housing stock, all. And, again, I don't know what it means when they say that special credit will be given for affordable housing. And then on top of that, your point as to what defines affordable housing? What are you, what are they using? What yardstick are they using? Are they using, you know, 60% AMI? What are they using? I don't know, it's not defined. So, but, you know, you're, all of you are correct, that I just think that, yeah, this is another unfunded mandate, to tell you the truth, you know? It really is. And it's a real problem. And my job is to work with my colleagues as best I can, you know, to try to fix it. So...
All right. Any other?
That didn't really answer your question there, Jeremy, but, you know... I'm frustrated about this as you guys are, I really am. And I sit on the Housing Committee, and, you know, I sit on the Housing Committee because I do care about affordable housing. But at least it'll give me a voice than if I, greater than if I were off the Housing Committee, to be able to say, "Hey, look, guys, you know, what are you doing here?" So, but please, please, within Wamoa... So, but please, please, within Wamoa, within, you know, talk to people in other counties, do whatever you can to raise your voice.
All right, well, thank you. And I think after February 1st, we look forward to hearing your, your thoughts on the, on the actual legislation when it comes out.
Absolutely. And look, I am happy to come back after, I, I, I'm really glad that at least we're able to have a conversation about this stuff. You know, rather than, you know, my, giving you that report on, you know, gets into all sorts of other issues, but I know how important this is. And, and so I'm more than happy to come back and share with you what I've learned and what, what, what we see is in this and, and how it's changed and how it isn't. You know, so I'm happy to do that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for pulling over on the side of the road to talk to us.
Thank you.
Poor guy.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
They've drowned.
Thank you.
All right, take care, thanks for everything.
Thank you, take care, bye-bye.
You too.
Bye.
Bye-bye. All right, well, that was very helpful. Okay, so I think we're going to just kind of put a pin in this a little bit until we see that legislation and know what we're actually dealing with. But it's definitely something we should, you know, keep an eye on. Again, not because I don't think it's a laudable goal, but because we want to make sure that we don't have...
Yeah, I mean, we want to do it thoughtfully, exactly.
And it seems like he doesn't think that it's being done that way, so.
No. And there are so many unique situations for every municipality that, and the governor is saying she doesn't want to implement something or to legislate something that can't be implemented. So there has to be a deep dive and a, a real look, an authentic thoughtful conversation.
Well, that's why I think to both of our points, it needs to come out of the budget and go through the legislative process, it does not need to be rushed through. It needs to, you need to sit down, municipalities, figure out how to craft this in a way that makes the most sense.
It seems like it was a lot of wasted time last year when it was pulled out of the budget and no progress was made.
I'm drawing a blank, what was, what was in there? We got $100,000 all those years ago. What was it from? I'm sorry, for the environmental, we got the $100,000.
From NYSERTA, was it a loss?
NYSERTA, yeah. And, I mean, that's the model, it's, if you hit these benchmarks, you get dollars as opposed to you have to do these benchmarks the way we want you to do them and do them now.
Yeah, the incentive model.
It's a different, great, that's the model.
And look, if we had to...
And then, then communities will get it done.
Right, their way, right.
As long as it's, you have to set the standards and then you offer dollars.
But it's laughable to think, you know, you, you're drawing, it's essentially a mile, right, around the train station. To think that a small piece of $250 million is going to do anything to help us with infrastructure or the plethora of other issues that may come with this is kind of laughable. So to Chris's point, it is an unfunded mandate essentially. And we're subject to a tax cap. And even if we weren't, I don't know that are, you know, not everybody in this town is wealthy and I don't know that many people can afford significant tax increases anymore. All right, so can I have a motion with that in mind to adjourn?
I did.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.